May advice that proper notice can be given by the county council in accordance with the Sunshine Hall and the following matter. Notice advertised in the Billings County Times and Camden Curry's post on January 16th, 2018, and posted on the Bolton Board on the same day. Mr. Burrell?
Here.
Mrs. Cloddy?
Here.
Mr. O'Connell?
Here.
Mr. Cattrick?
Here. We have three items on the action agenda. First, the approval of minutes for the May 22nd, 2018 closed session meeting. Have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Mrs. Cloddy?
Abstain.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Mr. Cattrick?
Aye. Next, we have approval of minutes for the June?
Excuse me, because I, you know, I'm saying abstain, but I was here.
She was here via phone.
So, should I, I'm just thinking about, I haven't missed a phone meeting.
It's carried. I mean, if you want to change your vote, that's fine. Did you have a chance to review them?
Yes, I did. I did, and they're okay. Okay, so I'll say, all right. Yeah, I'm just thinking about it.
You say aye?
Aye.
Next, we have approval of the minutes for the June 12th public meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Mrs. Cloddy?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Mr. Cattrick?
Aye. Next, we have a resolution, 2018-139. This is a resolution authorizing executive session to discuss contract negotiations with the emergency squad services.
So moved.
Second?
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Mrs. Cloddy?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Mr. Cattrick?
Aye. So, at this point, I'd like to walk on the agenda. Due to the announcement yesterday of the resignation of Councilman Schwartz affected the end of day yesterday. The, he is a member of the Democratic Committee and advised us that our meeting on Sunday that he was going to do that. In anticipation of that resignation, the committee has put forth three names as potential people to fill the vacancy. As it turns out, since we don't have a meeting for another three weeks, it's a good thing because I believe the council has to fill the vacancy. I'm very sure we have, the Democratic Committee had to provide it within 15 days, and then the council, I think, has...
Thirty days, I'm good.
Thirty days. So, rather than get into any of that, the, as chairman of that committee, I offered the results of our meeting on Sunday, and the three potential people to fill the vacancy were William Furia from 16 Stewart Avenue, Virginia Pareo from 502 Arch Street, and Colin Rafferty at 206 Chestnut Street. And certainly, I've had a chance to meet all of them. I think they're fine candidates. I have, you know, I, I know all three. So it's, they would all be qualified. We vetted them out. They meet all the criteria. I certainly have the person that I'd like to approve, but I'd like to see if anyone from council has input for us. Anyone? Council? Dan?
I had occasion to meet Ms. Pareo, and I found her to be a very smart person. And I think with the retirement of Councilwoman Cloddy, I think she would be good to have another female representative on the council. And I would like to, if it's okay, place a nomination, her name.
Okay. Is that what we would do, a motion to use Patty Tyler? Any other comments? You don't have to, I'm just saying.
Yeah, I know her pretty well. I was here in school, right, and Colin I know very well, so, you know, I'll second her nomination.
Okay. So unless Patty has any...
No, no objections.
Objections or questions? So I'll make a, so Dan has made a motion to, to have Virginia Pareo be the person that fills the vacancy and award one for the remainder of the term until December 31st, 2018. And Tyler, did you second?
Yeah.
Is this, I would assume would be a roll call?
Yes.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Mrs. Cloddy?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Mr. Cattrick?
Aye. Well, congratulations, Virginia. At this point, I think it'd be appropriate that we swear her in and get her to work. And I'm happy to say that Senator McConaway is here, has volunteered to perform the duty of swearing in the person filling the vacancy. So I'll ask both of you to come up here if you would. Do you want your daughters to clap their hands?
Um, if they'd like to. What's happening?
Would you like to come up and hold the vibe?
Oh, sure. Why not?
Sure.
Hold it for your mom. Yes, and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Virginia Pareo.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution...
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States...
Of the United States.
And the Constitution...
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey...
Of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith...
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance...
And allegiance.
To the same...
To the same.
And to the governments established...
And to the governments established.
In the United States...
In the United States.
And in this state...
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully...
And that I will faithfully...
Impartially...
Impartially.
And justly...
And justly.
Perform all the duties...
Perform all the duties.
Of Ward One Councilwoman.
Of Ward One Councilwoman.
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, ma'am.
Welcome.
Congratulations, gentlemen.
Thanks so much. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Great seeing you.
As you're saying it.
My first time doing this.
And the engineers report.
Okay.
Go home and read.
Homework.
Did you want to say anything before we get started?
I just wanted to say I'm very honored to be in this position, and thank you all for your support.
Thank you.
And I'm bored.
Very good. Okay, so next on the agenda is the municipal court request. Jeff, do you want to fill us in on that?
Certainly. Currently, the municipal court has three sessions per month. The court administrator, Colin Curry, has requested that, given some changes that occurred recently, change with the judge and how he conducts the courts, that we can get by with two courts per month instead of three. There's some changes that the judge has made in terms of first appearances, where the other judge always requested that individuals show up for a first appearance, even if they went to enter a plea at that point, and that's not moving along a little bit quicker so we could get away with two court sessions per month. In terms of the court personnel, the, well, the court personnel have been advised, attorney brings to my attention that we would need to contact the assignment judge to get permission from, from the assignment judge to move towards that. But that's essentially the issue.
So I'm, I'm going to certainly ask our attorney to, to comment on that. I'm not sure, I'm not familiar with if this happens over time. I would just mention that, I would just mention that the judge is new and the administrator is new in this position, correct?
Oh, she was the deputy for number years. She's been there about a year now.
So I'm just, Stu, I'm going to ask you to just kind of fill us in on the pros and cons of what would be involved with this and any pitfalls that we have to avoid.
So as Jeff indicated, we discussed it today, and the assignment judge in Superior Court, each visage, is really in charge of the municipal courts of that county. In this county, it would be Judge Bookbinder. Judge Bookbinder would have to give his permission, so a formal request would have to come or go to Judge Bookbinder, and he would have to approve it. Generally speaking, when municipalities do these things, they're done for economies and efficiencies, to cut expenses and so forth and so on. I talked to Jeff about some issues that I wanted to make sure were not going to be an issue. A lot of times in the police contracts, the police officers receive comp time for court, court time, and this may or may not affect that. It sounds to me like it's not going to be an issue here because it's, the court time is whenever this court and that's it. They can't legislate that. That's really for this governing body. And then, depending on how you pay your municipal court judge or prosecute your public defender, is that going to result in a savings? Is it not going to result in a savings? I understand that they're all paid by way of an annual salary. They're not paid per court session. So again, I don't know if there's been an evaluation. I think that the Superior Court judge is going to look to see, because the Superior Court judge receives directives from the administrative office of the courts up in Trenton. They want to make sure this is not going to result in a backlog. So there's going to have to be some information provided with the request to the assignment judge to establish the fact that this is going to help with the administration of justice. You're not going to have backlogs. You're not going to have overload lists. You're not going to have people waiting and so forth and so on. So, you know, if there's a, a legal reason to do it, then the court's always going to be concerned about, I'm talking about Judge Bookbinder. He's always going to be concerned about the administration of justice and not having backlogs. It might be good for right now, but what's it going to be like in a year from now?
Right.
Those are some of the issues that you have, the policy decisions you have to make.
So if, if we were to do this, present the request to Judge Bookbinder, and we found that six months, a year down the road, it wasn't working out, are they going to look? Are they going to, they going to look unfavorably about us switching back if that were the case? And is this something that other towns do?
A lot of towns have tried this. In two towns I'm familiar with, they had, they had cleaned up some backlogs, but they run in cycles. And in Camden County, the assignment judge looked at it from a longer period of time. Did you kind of run in cycles the fact that sort of you're in a downtime is really not, a representative sample of, over the longer term? So the judge said, let's take a look at it in six months and see where you are, to monitor the situation. If you can go long enough showing that you really only need two court sessions, then the judges will, will approve it. But I don't think you want to be going back to the judge every couple of, twice a year or every couple of years saying, hey, listen, now let's add a session. Let's take away a session, and it does not have the budget in either, so.
Stu, wouldn't Judge Bookbinder also communicate with the judge? And I would think, and get a feel for what our, our judge, what his reasoning is and stuff? And wouldn't that pretty much help Judge Bookbinder make that decision?
Yeah, it's going to be a twist of rationale.
It's really the judge to the judge, and...
I think it's the court administrator primarily is going to, they're going to want to look at statistics. How, how efficient is your municipal court? Are you in backlogs? Is this just a lull period? Or is this a long-term issue that you really only need two court, because upon time, maybe 10 years ago, you needed three court sessions. Now you don't need them as much. People are driving slow. I don't think that's the case. So I think it's really a statistical issue, and the courts, the court has, they, they don't have any role or take any issue about saving money. That's not their role when it comes to administration of justice. As far as they're concerned, they don't care about the cost. They care about the administration of justice, how quickly people come through your court system. They don't want backlogs, especially because you're dealing with some of these cases, not just traffic offenses. There are criminal offenses that are not indictable, so they come here, they want to make sure that there's speedy trials, and you don't want to be in a position where people get in cases dismissed because they're not getting speedy trials. So the court's going to look at all those factors, well above the issues that you might consider to be important. They'll look at the administration of justice and the long-term, the long-term trends that you have in your municipal court. Jeff, is this, is this request by the court administrator? Is that at the request of the judge, or is this just the court?
It's in concert with the judge.
Yes.
We, and let me just touch base on a couple of items that were brought up. First of all, we don't have a backlog, so that's not an issue. Secondly, the statistics aren't going down in terms of the number of cases. They're right where they've been. The difference has been in terms of how quickly they're getting administered at, at the courts. In the last two months, because of cancellations, we've had two courts in each of the months instead of three anyway. And neither one lasted as long as our three courts were lasting before. This is just that the judge does things differently and it's moving quicker.
So it's a, it's a different pattern because of the new judge, probably?
Yeah.
How long has the new judge been?
Yeah, that's the other question. Who's the judge, can I ask?
Judge A. R. DeRi.
The April public.
Should we give them, should we equal May, June, July, April, so April, May, June, July, four months?
I think I'd be a little more comfortable if you had them for a little longer.
And, and it sounds like they can kind of on an ad hoc basis just cancel an individual court without, without any problems. So would, I mean, would that be a situation where, rather than us forcing it to down to two courts, would it make sense to just leave it as is and then can cancel it as needed? Does that create a problem?
Cancellations create problems, because you're going to schedule someone, you're going to be scheduled and then canceled.
I got you.
I mean, that does create problems. Again, is that the numbers aren't down. The numbers are exactly where they've been, so it's not...
For like years?
Yeah. It's not a matter of the issue of it's suddenly a lull or something like that. It's not. It's just that...
I mean, the only thing is, this attorney's been, he's an attorney. This judge has been, you know, he's been in Palmyra for how many years? You know, a pretty long time. So I mean, I would think the judge is pretty knowledgeable to make an evaluation. This is my opinion, but you guys can decide, but I mean, I think...
I agree. If the judge and the court minister feel that way, and I think you guys should take their judgment on it. Jeff doesn't have any objections in the day-to-day operations of it then.
That's what they're there for, to make sure.
And ordinarily, Judge Bookbinder's going to say yes or no.
Exactly. He may say, let's take, let's wait six months. You may, you may get, you may get your cake and eat it too. Take your question down, and say, let's see how we are in six months.
So, so are we in agreement that we'll, we'll make this request?
Sure.
And if so, do we, what do we have to do? Just give Jeff the okay? Do we have to do anything official?
I always like to, you know, memorialize it with, with a vote to authorize the administrator to, essentially to court minister to make him the request.
Right. So that's a voice vote?
Voice vote or roll call, whatever you feel. Particularly go for roll call.
That's the way you are. All right. Just getting used to you, Stu.
And listen.
All right. So, so do I have a motion to authorize Jeff to request that we move to two courts per month instead of three?
Second.
Jamie?
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Mrs. Cloddy?
Aye.
Ms. Pareo?
Abstain.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Mr. Cattrick?
Aye. Okay. So next we have, I think the rest of the meeting really, Jim, is going to be up to you.
Yeah, I can do items two and three.
Yeah, let's, let's go through them.
So item two, we received bids back at the end of June, June 21st, for the Route 30 sidewalk improvement project, which is a phase two. This is Route, oh, what was that? Route 30. Uh, Route 130, sorry. This is the southbound side of Route 130 from approximately Fairview Boulevard to Cinnamon's. And it's just an install of sidewalks at various locations where they're currently missing. The project's funded by NJ DOT grant, Safe Streets of Transit. The low bid was submitted by Diamond Construction in the amount of $126,705. There was five bidders. It's below the engineer's estimate, even though the average of the bids is around the engineer's estimate. So we are recommending that the project be awarded to Diamond Construction, and this will be at your August 14th public meeting.
Is that complete on the sidewalk?
Though we'll still be missing gaps, but generally about 95%.
And we're going to still continue to give after we're funding to finish it?
Yes, we have, we have repeatedly filed for grants for safety improvements, I'd say. So that was, you know, there's no action needed tonight. Just, if there's any questions on the project, it'd be on the agenda for Ward 14.
Right. We're okay. Everybody's good with that. We'll put it on the public meeting. And I can see Patty shaking her head. She's not shaking her head.
And with similar note, we received bids last Thursday, July 19th, for the 2018 roadway improvement program. This is for reconstruction and resurfacing to Lipton Thall and Lidle and Antietam and Winmore. There were four bidders. RE Pearson was the low bidder. The bid does have a deletion item, which would be Winmore. The end, the low bid came in below the engineer's estimate. It was a good price, and we are familiar with RE Pearson. They're a very good contractor. We are recommending a ward based on your available budget. It's important to note that we also have advertised Hartford Road, which is also part of the road program, but that is a separately, separate contract, which is, that portion of it is DOT funded, so that's why there's two separate contracts. That's advertised now, and we're receiving bids the week prior to the August 14th meeting. So once we receive bids and know the lowest responsive bidder and the price that that's going to be, we'll know whether or not you can either award the base bid or we'll have to enact deletion one.
So, and that's going to be dependent on Hartford Road?
On how much that costs.
Will Hartford Road be included in, in the August 14th?
Yes.
Okay. So this is kind of a, so that's on, still on a kind of a contingency. We have this, this, we have potential for the deletion.
Based on our estimates, we're confident that you're going to be able to award the entire base bid here and Hartford Road. You're definitely awarding Hartford Road, whatever, I'm assuming it comes in within around our estimates.
We're hoping to get it all.
We're hoping to get it all. We just, you know, ideally, we don't want to have to do deletion one. You know, we don't, we want to be able to get the budget we can down this year. So we're confident it's all going to work out.
I don't foresee that you're going to have to use a deletion item, given the funds that are available. Unless something really strange.
Yeah. And we actually met with the county the other day. We got DOT approval for Hartford Road, so that's why it took a little longer for Hartford Road to advertise, do it simultaneously because of the local aid and county involvement. But that's all squared away. So on August 14th, what, the only thing we're going to be asking is for, on August 14th, is you, you know, you're going to receive the bids also for Hartford Road then and award it then without a work session in between, just the way the calendar falls. I mean, if there's any questions with that, you, this way, we just want to get them done this year, you know, since it's, you know, for the weather. So August 14th, if you have three awards on you.
Thank you for slightly overestimating this.
Yeah, I mean, it's... The averages are, are right around the estimate, so we're just getting good competitive pricing.
Oh, that's fair.
And asphalt is cheap.
So we'll put that on the agenda for the public meeting. We'll get additional information before we do that. So I love a short agenda, so let's go around and ask for reports. Jamie, have a, get close to that? Jeff, do you have anything at all?
Nothing.
Jamie, have anything additional?
Yeah, just real quick, the roof, the roof is about 80% done. There's just some amenities have to get finished. The main bulk of the roof replacement is completed. They have, just have to finish the, the metalwork, skylight work, and then they're replacing the ladder, and then they're doing the final extra coat for the metalwork, which is part of the extra warranty. So that should be done within the next two to four weeks, depending on when the metal comes in. Or the warranty?
Yeah. I'm very concerned with the skylight. I know the skylight, it's, we're basically refurbishing it and getting it to where it needs to be, in good shape. What, what warranty do we have?
I have, I know it's at least a two-year, it's at least a two-year maintenance bond. The manufacturer's warranty is 25 years, but that doesn't, that doesn't cover...
You're talking about the contractor for the roof. I'm talking about the contractor.
The contractor for the roof is responsible for the skylight, and that's at least a two-year maintenance guarantee. There's no additional...
Did you check just to make sure?
I know, I know for a fact it's a two-year maintenance guarantee for, which includes the skylight. There's no additional warranty past the two years.
Okay. And my question to that is, I think the normal average warranty is three years. I don't understand why that's...
I mean, every, every contract we put out here is two-year maintenance bond.
Roof job, I think.
And then Pheasant Road was just resurfaced. I don't know if everybody's seen it yet. Pheasant Road, the grand drive outside Hunter's Bluff.
So, good. All right, Jim, anything else? Anybody have a question?
Can I mean, have any? All right. Thanks.
Stu, anything for us tonight?
No report.
I love that. And let's go around the room with the council from Ward Two, Dan O'Connell. Dan?
Yeah, at the last public meeting, we had a resident get up and address us about the homestead rebate. And I just wanted to pass some information along. With the budget being adopted by the legislature and signed by the governor, there is going to be some additional direct credit this year for homestead rebates, but unfortunately, it won't be above last year's levels. I remember that gentleman asking us a question about having it restored to the old levels. But half a loaf, I guess, is better than none. I'm sorry Mike isn't here. I'd like to thank him for his service to the town. We didn't always agree on everything. Hopefully, maybe he'll see us on Facebook and he'll hear this, but I appreciate his service to the town and for Virginia to step up and be willing to serve, and I wish her all the best. And that's my report.
Thanks, Dan. Tyler, what do you have?
Just an update about Delaware and laid out I have to bring to council. Spent a lot of time on the phone with Jeff over the last couple of weeks, working on the event. Today, indicated that the JIF in the mail does not cover the inflatables insurance-wise. So my question is, it's more for legal and council. The vendor is going to list us as an additional insured. Does that, is council okay with that and legal okay with that? Covering us as a township, or what other steps are we going to do to ensure that we protect it and mitigate some of our liability?
I'm, I'm going to ask you about the legal side of that. So what my understanding is that we're, we have, we're listed as an additional insured. Tyler called me after, after his conversation with Jeff, and it looks like we can't buy insurance on those items because we don't own it. It'd be like buying, me buying insurance for Dan's car. It's just, it's not something that we can do. That would be nice, I know.
No insurable interest.
So, is that what they call it? I knew that we have, the insurable guys would have a name for it. So tell us what, what, you know, the kind of the pros and cons. What, what does it do if we do that? What, what is the risk that's involved, and what isn't involved?
So if the company that provides the inflatables, provides us with insurance, and somebody's hurt, or there's property damage, or injured in, in using them during this event, they will, of course, look to the insurance company first, and hopefully that would resolve the claim. There is a possibility that the insurance company doesn't pay, or if there's an issue where they can't settle, then an injured party or someone who suffered property damage could sue both the inflatable company and the township. We would not have our own insurance coverage. We would have to rely upon the insurance coverage for the inflatable company. In situations like this, where we're somewhat left open because there's not a separate insurance covering the township, there's a possibility to get an indemnification, a hold harmless agreement from this company that basically says, if you're sued, any insurance doesn't provide coverage, we will pay for your attorney. We will pay for any judgment. We will pay for any settlement if the township sues. So typically what happens, somebody, God forbid, gets hurt, gets injured, property damage, the, the injured party, the plaintiff, gets an attorney, and they do the shotgun approach. They sue everybody. They sue the inflatable company, they sue the township, they sue the county, they sue everybody. And everybody jumps in. Usually you go to your own, your own insurance company. We won't have that. We'll have the policy from the other insurance company. They'll provide coverage and hopefully cover everything. But there is a little gap in coverage, if you will. So a hold harmless in the contract with the inflatable company would provide for an ability for that company to pay for any attorney that we choose to represent us in the case, as well as any, if we're held to be responsible for any damages. Remember, if it's something that we cause, that insurance policy from the inflatable company will not provide coverage. So if it's something that the township, for whatever reason, and parties start to point their fingers at each other. So, but the hold harmless is going to say the same thing essentially, that if, we will provide you with, an attorney will pay any judgment, except if it's, that was just under part of the township. Now, a hold harmless indemnification has been often referred to as, as extra protection, and sometimes it's referred to as fool with a pen because the company has to be in business to provide the coverage, to pay for... business to provide the coverage, to pay for the attorney, to pay for the judgment, to pay for the settlement, two years, three years, four years, five years from now. It really rests upon the strength of that company. So I'm not a risk manager, but I've dealt with this long enough in my career, and I've been on the plaintiff's side a lot, so if you don't have insurance and the indemnification doesn't work, then you would have to pay out of your own operating budget, merge appropriations and so forth and so on. And so it depends upon your, how much risk you want to take, the nature, I mean, if it's a, you know, inflatable slide, that's one thing, if it's a knife thrown in combat, it's something different.
You don't have any of that, do you?
I don't think so, I was just giving you the, you know.
So just, just for, you know, erring on the side of caution, what about, you know, having the parent sign a waiver for the child, or, I mean, I'm assuming that these are just kids rides? Kids inflatable?
Joe can, I mean, we talked to Joe on my ride over, we can, I mean, I don't know how much teeth a waiver has, but we could, what if we, you know, sign a waiver and then you get a van, and then, you know, the van you can go on, the rides, does that help? Does that add teeth? The last thing we want to do is, you know, going some.
Well, what's the difference of us and what we did for Delran?
The, the Mel stopped coverage this year.
Maybe they had enough cases of them, like maybe flying and the issues.
My understanding is they haven't, but they've been concerned about it.
So there's got to be a reason why they did that, so I would, I mean, knowing that, I would be on the side of caution, which is rough, because for them to do that, that almost tells you that they're trying to wipe their hands of it. So, just my opinion, but.
Let me ask, let me ask too, I know that, that the state requires licensure, certification, something, are these, are these folks?
They have to be certified and licensed.
All of, all of them are. And they all are? And that's pretty, that's not just to fill out a form and get a certification, is that inspection or anything like that? Joe, Joe's here. For the people who don't know, Joe is chairman of the recreational advisory committee and a, and a fireman. What else, Joe? You do a lot of other stuff, but we don't want to talk about that. So they're all certified, and do we know anything about that certification, is that something that?
They don't want to be certified from the state for.
In order to even operate in New Jersey.
These are for the inflatable?
Yeah.
Let me, let me just give you an example of what I'm going to tell you, and I get you, they're all certified, but we had an issue in Delran last year, Tyler, you know exactly what I'm going to be saying, those inflatables actually deflated, and they were deflating with kids in them, and luckily we got them out of there fast. So I don't care if they're certified or not, I'm just going to tell you, they had an issue with their compressors, and then they tried putting more inflatables on less compressors to try to get them to fill up more, and they actually took a couple out, a couple of the inflatables.
Less, less inflatables on this.
More compressors.
They forgot a couple things you ordered too, that company wasn't there.
I got you, but that's what I'm saying, certified, I don't know what that means.
So is this the same company?
No, I'm not saying it is, but I'm just saying that certification can be awesome.
Do they have operators with the, they do have operators there?
Then I'd be remiss if I didn't add, that we do have Title 59 communities, we, unlike a private party, there's a certain standard that you have to meet to be able to sue a municipality government entity that is different from a private party, and the political claims notice, and all those other types of things, you have to show them it's palpably unreasonable. So it's a very high standard, and in a lot of cases, I don't know what Burlington County does, but a lot of towns when they have fireworks, the JIF, they don't cover that, but you get a very hardy insurance certificate naming the town as an additional insured, you get an indemnification, and really, if you're only just providing the venue, are you doing something palpably, and we know your fireworks company is responsible for a lot of that. So this is, it wouldn't be the first time that a town did something like this, it happens all the time, it really depends upon your level of risk aversity.
It's the same process, and it's the same section of the regulations with the insurance that we have to follow, is that they have their people there running the rides.
Oh, that's on file with you, that's good.
If we can legally draft a whole harmless, that's, I mean, the JIF has, you know, a standard one, but if legal can do that, if, you know, that has some teeth to it, I mean, does the waiver add any extra, or is that just more paper to?
That might be more, like, more difficult to do the night of, if there are a lot of kids, and if this waiver is strong.
So really it comes down to, if we're comfortable that we have additional insured, we have a whole harmless agreement with them, you know, they're there operating, you know, it's not the same company, and what's, which name of the company?
Time for Fun Jumpers in Pensalkin, the one Ken, I forget, they were from New York, I think.
The ones we have are from New York.
Yeah.
So, I, I mean, I've heard of them, and that I'm, you know, I don't have any kids that are in, playing jumpers.
It's only a call you guys kind of make, like you guys got.
I think, I think if we do everything we can to protect ourselves, you know, it's not, I think, I, I think we should do it.
I'm willing to take a chance, and we're not doing a high. How many years did we do it at Delran?
Yeah.
How many, how many years?
We did, we did several.
And we only had the one year of an incident?
So this would be the inflatables?
Just smiled, I didn't like that.
This was the worst last. Yeah, but that company, yes.
So this would, this would include the inflatables, we opted not to do the tethered balloon, and, and the, and the police ended, and we're talking about the mechanical bull.
And they're doing that.
Any fireworks?
No fireworks.
If you do the mechanical bull, you should do the waivers, just so that there's somebody there.
You ain't kidding.
Oh, thank you.
I mean, I don't know sure if it's going to help, but it wouldn't hurt.
Is the mechanical age restricted?
Yeah, yeah, it's going to be for kids, it's not for.
Oh, it is for kids?
It's for kids, bulls for kids.
It's totally.
Mechanical bull.
Is it, is it inflatable, mechanical?
Is that for kids or for, for cowboy?
For kids that are about twenty years.
Yeah.
Are, are you going to allow children on the mechanical bull, or is there, it's just, it's just?
We haven't assessed that yet.
Oh, okay.
We should probably see what the age group is, and put an age limit on it, because you're not going to have a seven, eight-year-old go on there.
I think the mechanical bull, you may want to be able to do a signing thing where they're taken responsibility.
I think maybe that should be eighteen and older.
No, I need a signing release or something.
Absolutely.
I have submitted to try to see if there's an insurance, another insurance policy that we can add to this, and I put it into the joint insurance fund, they're going to shop it around and see if there's, and at what price, just to, you know, see if there's another level of coverage.
So it sounds like the inflatables were willing to do mechanical bull, as long as it's age-restricted, eighteen and over, and they signed a waiver.
And who's drafting, legal will draft it with?
Yes, he will, he's writing now.
Is eighteen too old, should it be sixteen, or is it eighteen?
I don't know, you know, if sixteen's there, they're not old enough to sign a waiver anyway.
Eight kids, right.
I say eighteen, I say eighteen.
And from Texas.
Texas don't hurt.
Somebody give me some information about this company, so I can prepare, awesome, everything to Japanese.
So from Ward One, Councilwoman Correa, any report for us to see?
No report.
Okay. And from Ward Three, Councilman Unercoletti, no report, and I have no report, I, other than saying thank you to Mike Schwartz, or, you know, we, I think a sign of any good group is that we have divergent opinions, and certainly, Mike and I agree and disagree as much as one with the other, and I thank him for, for his service along the years, and welcome to Virginia Correa. Can you have announcements for us?
Yeah, I got a couple. One is, I do want to thank Mike Schwartz as well, he put in several years, and I know he was representing Ward One very well, Victoria, welcome aboard. I mean, Victoria, I'm sorry, Virginia. And I do have a couple other things. I do want to congratulate the police for their accreditation, that's a big feat, I know they look forward to going through that every year, and they came through with flying colors, and they were very proud of it, and they deserve to be, and I just want to give you some credit for what they do, and they do a fantastic job, so. Also, there was something else I wanted to ask, and Gary, I guess this ties in with you, there was a, I just got another notification, and that's what made me think about it. There was an individual who, I guess a business person, who was wanting to pursue possibly a marijuana, you know, business. Did you reach out to that guy?
I did talk with him, he said that they were looking at a number of towns, they kind of have tentative agreement with two, where they, they're, they had positive reactions with two, and I said, you know, we'd be willing to talk, and I said he'd get back.
Okay, because I just got another one from, I don't know if this is the company, I don't think it is, Greenleaf, Greenlife, it's a New Jersey-based.
This is going to take some getting used to.
But Greenlife, New Jersey-based cannabis company, and they were reaching out to us, they're medical and cultivation, manufacturing, and a dispensing facility. I don't think it is, because it's a different name, the person. So it's another one that's looking, and I'm, I'm going to tell you, if it's a big revenue generator, I know in the past we were a little bit concerned about it, but seeing as the way it's going, in the future, especially if New Jersey's going that way, so if it is, I'm always, I know me as a mayor, I always look for any type of revenue generator, and if it's a, if it's a positive, I think we should definitely consider it, so.
Yep.
That's the other thing. And then the other thing is, and I don't want to mention any names, but we were asked to put a proclamation together for a, a public, what's it, a public official, like, a public official for one of our services in this town, I'm just giving, giving you a heads up that we're going to put something together. I don't want to mention the name, because I don't want to be down in public, lose the surprise.
Oh, okay, very good.
All right?
Yep.
But I just want to let everybody know.
We can, we can, we'll know when we get the proclamation.
I just wanted to give you guys a heads up, we're going to run that.
Okay, so I need a motion to go into public?
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, and we'll do as we usually do, we'll go around the room. Mr. Schmidt?
Good evening.
Good evening.
John Schmidt, Buster City, New Jersey. The last meeting I was at, I was expressing my comments toward, comments made in three meetings from tonight, regarding one of the councilperson's comments. Included in that language was referring to the professionals of the township as my professionals. And I don't know if I really, if I said that at the last meeting or not, and I don't think township professionals in any government, they work for the township, they don't belong to a, a councilperson. Before, I was cut off from speaking, and being able to comment at a public meeting is something that's guaranteed by the law of this state, and it's a right to free speech, guaranteed and enshrined in the Constitution of the United States, and in the Constitution of the State of New Jersey. Council President, Captain Bowman, your actions last meeting, because I was not hostile, I was not vulgar, I was stating my opinion, I have a right to do that, whether you agree with it, or you disagree with it. Same goes for any member of council, a member of the public has a right to express themselves or anything they feel important, and in a reasonable amount of time, a lot of it done during a public conference period. The actions last meeting was, frankly, it's comparable to another country, North Korea or Iran. I was detained by your police in the parking lot.
You were detained?
Upon, upon your order. Yes, I was, I was detained by your police.
Is there a police report of that?
There doesn't have to be a police report of that. Your actions that caused it, you didn't like what I was saying, because in no way was I out of line. Okay, that's, that's frankly not the way public officials should act. I also would like to ask, I think the township of Delran deserves an answer, a yes or no answer, and I would like to know whether the council president signed or forged election petitions within the last five years, and signed somebody else's name and forged them. And I'd like a yes or no answer to that question.
Thank you for your, for your questions.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything, James, anyone from this side? No?
You good?
No, no, anything?
Yeah.
Sir?
Yeah, I'm Scotty Christopherro, in Haddonfield, New Jersey, and I am here tonight because of.
Just put your last name for the record, please.
D E C R I S T O F A R O. Thank you. You're welcome. I'm here tonight because of the audacity you had to call the police on a member of the public, asking a question. I watched that video online, and I didn't see Mr. Schmidt be vulgar, use profanity, or in any way break the peace of this meeting. I found your actions reprehensible, egotistical, and out of line. I didn't hear you apologize to Mr. Schmidt. Do you have an apology form? No? Okay. I also find your actions reprehensible, that you would put your police chief in that position, as well as the township in a position of a potential lawsuit. I can't believe you had the audacity to do that to a citizen, to call the police, because whether you consciously or subconsciously don't like him or don't want him to be here, you have absolutely no right, none, to call police on, on a citizen asking questions. The only thing preventing you from being out of control is the fact that we have an open forum today for citizens to come and ask questions, and hold your feet to the fire. I also admonish the council here, every single one of you just stood by and watched a sitting elected official call the police on a person, on a citizen. It's why people are afraid of the government, sir. I don't know you personally, I just know you from that video, and I'm sorry, but you, you need to hear this, because what you did was wrong. Absolutely intolerable that you would do something like that, and I think that speaks to your actions, I think that speaks to your heart of service, because it's not about you, it's about your ego. Now, I'll also take note that your behavior was out of line, was uncalled for. So I'll also take note and ask you, I took note that you didn't even answer Mr. Schmidt's question, if you forged documents, are you going to give an answer? No? All right, so there's proof somewhere that you did forge documents. Will you resign? Yes, sir?
We're getting public comments, sir.
I'm, I'm asking you a question. I think, I think the fact that you were out of line and totally out of control with calling the police on Mr. Schmidt, that you haven't, did you apologize to your chief? Yeah, I think so. I think those actions, combined with what I'm hearing, that you may have forged documents, shows a pattern of behavior that is, one, if you did, is illegal, and should go to the prosecutor's office and the Attorney General, and action should be taken. But I find your pattern of behavior very concerning, and that's why I'm here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Seeing no other hands on this, for a motion to come out of public?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, and now, if we, I, would you see the motion go into closed session?
So move second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, we're going to go into closed session, we will come out, I don't know.